Good afternoon, everyone. This is Melissa Thomas with Florida National News with the FNM Politics and Power Series. We are back. I know it's been quite a while since we did an episode of FNM Politics and Power, and we've been busy behind the scenes. But for today's episode, it's actually a follow-up for those of you who have been following us back when we were doing our interviews in person, and we'll gradually get back to that as things start to open back up a little more freely with COVID-19. We are still trying to be careful out here, but we'll continue to keep the interviews coming for you guys. And today is a virtual follow-up to an in-person interview we did quite a while ago. We are following up with Orange County Commissioner Maribel Gomez-Cordero. Those of you who were following our series back when we were doing it in person, we had sat down with her and kind of talked with her about how things were going. She was newly elected at the time. So for those who may not know too much about Commissioner Gomez-Cordero, here's a bit of an overview for you about her. She hails from the beautiful island of Puerto Rico. She has been a resident of Central Florida for the past 23 years. She is married to Henry Cordero and is the proud mother of three, Marian Henry and Eric. She holds a master's degree from Western University in Clinical Mental Health Counseling, specializing in marriage and family. Now, she has received several recognitions for her dedication and service to Orange County and the Central Florida community. She was honored to be recognized back in 2002 by the Educational Foundation for the Advancement of Child Welfare with "A Person That Makes a Difference" Award by the Florida Coalition for Children of Central Florida. She's also been recognized by several others, such as the Special Congressional Recognition for Outstanding and Invaluable Service to the Community by the U.S. United States of American Congressional Record back in 2014 by Congressman Allen Grayson and Member of the Year 2015 Award by the Hispanic Women Chamber of Commerce of Central Florida. She's also been given the Commitment to Dedication to Our Community Women Empowering Women Recognition 2015 by the Florida Technical College of Central Florida, among many others. She continues to serve as, you know, she continues to be active as a volunteer. She serves as a member of different agencies within the community. She is the Director of the Counseling Coaching and Mentoring Department at CBA Orlando. She's an advisor and board member for Victims of Domestic Violence and Sexual Abuse Program at Nuevo Cinderell. She volunteers for feeding the homeless with miles of help through Christ and CBA ministries and is a board member of CBA Orlando Church for two terms, where she was from 2002, 2006, and 2016 to present. Commissioner Gomez-Cordero was honored with the Key of the City SIBA, where she grew up, as well as receiving special recognition by the Mayor of the City, Honorable Angelo Cruz-Ramos. So she's been very big in the community for a very long time, both in Puerto Rico and here in Central Florida. So for our interview today, we definitely want to get back to, you know, kind of follow-up with what she has been doing during her term as Commissioner. So without further ado, let us bring her in. Commissioner, welcome to the show.
Thank you, Melissa, and thank you to all of those people that have been, you know, following you with all your communication and your information and all your show. I mean, thank you, and it's an honor for me to be here.
No problem. Thank you for coming on. I appreciate it. Hopefully, your staying dry this weather is kind of random. But, um, you know, firstly, obviously, we are still in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic. So I always lead off the interviews asking, how are you doing? How's your family doing in the midst of the pandemic?
Thank you for that question. I have to say that we have been doing well. We have been taking all the precautions and also following the CDC guidelines. We always washing our hands, you know, having some distance, yes, using our masks. And I got my shot, you know, I did it with other commissioners in the press conference of the mayor. And actually, we had our second shot yesterday. So we already have the vote doses and we already have, you know, I have been feeling well. I am not, I mean, really not feeling anything. I haven't had no fever, nothing. Only, yes, the arm that is like swollen a little bit, but beside that, nothing. And I got the Pfizer, and I think the commissioners had the Pfizer as well. So we're doing good, and my family is doing good. Thank you.
Awesome. That's good to know. That's good news. Um, kind of give us your thoughts on that, you know, the recent kind of domino effect after the Johnson &amp; Johnson pause. Because I know one of the reasons why you and your fellow commissioners had gotten the vaccine during the press conference was to kind of increase consumer confidence, if you will, you know, confidence, community confidence to get the vaccine. But have you heard any feedback from members of your community, like within your district, as to, you know, them holding off on the vaccine after what happened with Johnson &amp; Johnson?
Yes, my district and not my district. You know, people called my office, and they have been very concerned about, you know, what happened with JJ, with the Johnson &amp; Johnson. But we have been explaining to them, and in top of that, it's very responsible of us as a leader to let them know that they could go straight to their primary doctor so they can have more information and, you know, the, um, from somebody that they trust, which is their physician or the primary doctor, who has all the answers as well and can give them more, you know, specific information. But you know that we haven't received that much, um, of people saying, oh, I have the Johnson &amp; Johnson, and I'm feeling bad or so. No, actually, today I had a meeting, and one of the ladies in the meeting said that she had the Johnson &amp; Johnson and that she felt, you know, somewhat, um, a little bit with fever, like the normal thing, and then she was okay. So she said that they are saying that they have to wait like two weeks or 15 days until they, she said she's fine. So I think that soon we're going to hear what's going to happen with the Johnson &amp; Johnson. But for now, you know, the county put a pause on it, and I think the whole nation put a pause on it to wait until we have any, you know, results or any, anything that is connected with what happened with those ladies and the guy.
Got you. Appreciate, you know, appreciate you sharing that. And what are your thoughts on that, the recent uptick in cases that we started to see, kind of almost as a domino effect after spring break, especially after the lull that we started to see, like we started to see the cases come down once the vaccines were available? You know, what are your thoughts on that recent kind of gradual increase in positive cases?
Well, you know, I was, I was struck in a little bit that whole spring break because remember, not everybody gets spring break at the same time. So it will be one week, the other week, the week. So they will continue, you know, going all around. You know, it was very terrible in Miami, and, you know, like it all, all come over, and then we had the, um, you know, Good Friday, you know, the week of Good Friday, and then, so Easter. So it was all, you know, one after another. So I think that the age, you know, the teenagers and so, which are the numbers that increase that, you know, between those range, younger, I think they didn't really take care of themselves, and they didn't use masks. I mean, if you see the TV and the news, they will have a bunch of people with no mask or no distance. So, you know, having a pandemic, you know, how we having it right now is very irresponsible to be, you know, in group like that and not really taking care of yourself, because it's like, I always say, Melissa, I take care of me, I take care of you. You take care of you, and you take care of me. And that way, we're going to try, you know, to decrease these numbers and to, you know, get rid of the pandemic.
Right. And before we go to our first commercial break, I did want to talk about the county's COVID response thus far. Obviously, we've, it's already been a year, which is insane, time flew. But what are your, what are your thoughts on how Orange County has responded to the COVID-19 pandemic? Not only in terms of vaccines, but also in terms of even the previous steps, the shutdown that we, that, you know, Orange County had to do in terms of the curfews, the implementation of the mask mandate, the strike teams in terms of enforcing compliance? Kind of give your thoughts on the overall Orange County response to the pandemic? How do you think things have been going?
Very good. It's a good question. I have to say that the mayor had response very quick, and, you know, like he said, we were, I don't know, talking about something in the hallway, and he, we already over it. I mean, like, like, we already, um, we have taken a lot of steps, like quickly. Let me put it that way. And I think that the way he has responded in regards to the county and how his main is, his main concern was, and he transmit that to all of us, is to have a safety and a safe community. Instead, you remember what he said? Instead of we having, you know, why we should have everything open and financially we can be doing well when we have the community suffering and struggling with this COVID? So we need to, you know, balance that. And you remember when everything starts shutting down and then, you know, and then we start fighting back to open the barber shop? You remember the hairdresser and all these small business, which they have been very affected? And you know, some of them haven't opened yet, some opened, and they still struggling to, you know, to keep up, because it was a lot of several weeks that it was closed. And, but I think that based on what the government, in local government in Orange County and also the city, because, you know, we all work together with Mayor Boris Dyer, I think we have done a very good job. I know there have been a lot of concern or complain about the mask, wearing the mask. He already having some kind of meetings, and he already said yesterday in the, in the last press conference, he said that they are trying to see how they're going to, you know, decrease the use of the mask, but he doesn't think it would be now, it would be maybe after summer. And why after summer? If you think, you know, the teenagers, everybody is out there in the beaches and, and, you know, this party is, is all these, you know, events, and that's why he wants to like give it a little bit more chance. So instead of we doing three step in the front, like I said, we over, when I said we over it, it's like we already like, you know, rushing it, like stepping up, you know, three step ahead, we don't want to go back. We want to continue going, you know. So we, when the next school year also start, it would be more safe for the kids, for the teachers and the personnel. So it's a lot of thinking. I mean, this is not only, you know, one piece. It's a lot of piece together that we have to, you know, try to put them, for them to work. So I think Orange County has done a very good job.
Awesome. And we're going to get into a little bit more detail on the small business angle on the other side of this break, guys. Stay tuned, the conversation continues.
One of the things I love about Bass Pro is they have three great ways to shop. You can head into one of their awesome stores, visit basspro.com, or get great gear from that catalog Johnny Morris sends out. Hi, here's your package. Bass Pro shops, where commitment, passion, and the great outdoors all come together. Why wouldn't you shop anywhere else?
All right, guys, and we are back with FNM Politics and Power with Commissioner Gomez-Cordero. So, um, before we went into the break, you were talking a little bit about, obviously, the overall Orange County response to the pandemic. Let's talk a little bit more about that sort of funding side in terms of assisting small businesses and on the personal end, the rent assistance as well. Kind of fill in our audience as to what that process was at the county level. Because, I mean, obviously, for the lay folks, they were told, you know, here's the portal, make sure you, you go in and you apply. But what was that like from a county perspective in terms of getting the funding?
You know, Melissa, that's a very good question, and I always like to, you know, let the people know that it's a first-time process for all of us. This is a pandemic that just took us, you know, in surprise, and we were all managing to try to serve other people, you know, in their needs and so. So it happens with the unemployment, you know, how that broke down, a lot of people, and that really, really affect a lot of financial coming into the home, a lot of, you know, a salary or money coming into the homes that really put, you know, our families in a struggle, you know, mood. And let me tell you that, um, when we received the first $243 million that it was divided into, you know, small business, well, it was not small business, it was business, because the small business came after, you remember that we, District Three and District Four, we were like requesting for the small business also to have some money, because they were not coming then, because they didn't have, I don't know, certain numbers of employees, and they didn't have, I don't know, whatever it was, they were maintaining the business from home, and that was not also something that they were not, you know, part of, of receiving the money. So we also, you know, fight for that, and that also was brought into consideration, and those small business also received some money. So then, you know, there was the SBA, which that federal money, there were also the PPP that came in, and then with that money, it was divided to pay the rent. We gave $1,000 first, and then we gave $4,000 to deviation of eviction. So there was, you know, money coming. Now we have $33 million, Melissa, for, to give $10,000 to the people that need to pay rent that being affected by COVID. And we still haven't spent a million dollars. And we have that portal open for more than two months. I have been saying every single time that I come out to the radio, to the, to the media, Facebook, to the TV, anytime, I always mention, please, apply. There is money there to help pay the rent. So I'm saying it again, it doesn't matter where you live. If you live in Orange County, you entitled to be assist with this money. If you, you know, I mean, if you were let go from your, from your job, if you were decreased on time, right, that they just put you part-time or they took some hours out, if you got COVID and you were in, you know, you had to stay in quarantine and you cannot go to work, all of those things affect your income. So if you, you know that it affect your income and you couldn't pay your rent and you were one, two, three months behind, please, go into the website ocfl.net/rentalassistance and apply for that $10,000 so that way we can pay. And it goes directly to the landlord. It doesn't go directly to the, to the person, but it goes to the landlord, and that's too secure that you are not going to be, you know, evicted or you're not going to lose your, your home. So please apply. Yes, so, you know, there's a lot of money coming as well, Melissa, there's more money coming. And I know this question is common, but I wanted to tell you that, um, the people from Economic Department, they are trying to see how that money going to be divided so that way we can help more people in different other areas. So it hasn't come to the commission yet, we haven't been briefed on it yet. I think they're still working on it. But yeah, there, there will be like $270 million coming in, which we're going to continue helping the rent, the business, you know, it's going to be a lot of good, you know, assistance for the community. So we're going to keep everybody tuned. You know, the mayor hasn't said anything yet in the conference, because, I mean, they still working on how they're going to, you know, do that. But we still have money running, like the $33 million for the rent, which is one of the most important thing that we need to target, the rent. The rent needs to be paid. So that's why we have that money. So we, you know, we want to tell the people to come and apply for it.
And once again, guys, go to ocfl.net/rentalassistance. It's right in the little banner below us. So if that's something you want to look into, look into it. There is nothing like leaving money on the table. Don't do that. If you have the opportunity, you're a resident of Orange County, and this is something that directly affects you, be sure to visit that, visit that link below to make sure you get those benefits. Thank you so much, Commissioner Cordero, for sharing that. That's pretty important. So want to move on very quickly to at least one of the top-of-mind current events questions, at least here in the state of Florida. So you are someone who has a heart for the environment. I would love to get your thoughts, your reaction on, you know, the recent Piney Point Reservoir situation. What were, what were your thoughts on that? And what was your response, you know, to both the governor's response as well as, you know, the Commissioner of Agriculture? Both, both parties went to Manatee County, they took a look at things and proposed their solutions. What were your thoughts on it?
You know, Melissa, good question as well. You know, we have a new director for utilities, Ed Torres. And I called him because, like you said, I'm very into environment, you know, water table, you know, clear water, clean water. So I had a conversation with him, which I asked him, how will that be, you know, damaging or how will that be something that will, will affect us? And he said that, um, that it won't, it won't affect us directly now, but he said that the most important thing is to ensure that our facilities right here locally and environmental resources are up kept to the highest standard and monitored correctly to avoid this happen here. So, you know, things happen, Melissa, you know, we know that, you know, infrastructure, sometimes, you know, when time passed and with the weather, with these hurricanes coming, you know, that, that hit, I don't know, everywhere in the USA, it could be affecting the infrastructure. You know, once in a while, you have to, you know, check on them, monitor that they are in high quality. So I think that's the most important here right now. That's one of the things that he have, you know, in his, as his priority, that all the, you know, infrastructure and the things that we have here be monitored and in the highest standard. But yes, it worries me, because, you know, it says they were going to affect, and you know, the water were going to go straight to the sea. And so, I don't know, we have to continue monitoring and checking to see. I think, I think the, at state level, they, they give, you know, an importance to it. They were really on top of, you know, of that situation. So I think they taking care of it.
Got you, got you. And now, real quick, before we go into the next commercial break, I did want to get into, like District Four specifically, you know, kind of update folks on what you've been working on since your election. It's been a while. Um, so kind of fill us in on what your initial vision was when you were first elected and what you've been able to accomplish, obviously, with the help of the Orange County Board of Commissioners, since, of course, all of you work together and you collectively vote on different things. But what have you been able to do in District Four since you were first elected?
Yes, you know, Melissa, since I came in, I remember in my campaign also, I was not promising things that I couldn't control, because you, you shouldn't promise something that you cannot handle. But I can handle listening to the people, being here for the people. I know there was always, I want to be the bridge between the county and the community. I have been doing that. I have been listening to everyone up to this date. I have never denied a meeting with nobody, even if they are not in my district. I always been there for everybody, including other people from District One, from District Two, District Three, District Five, District Six, from even from Osceola, from Kissimmee. I think, and, and I will not deny that, because if I am a leader, and I'm, yes, I'm an elected official for District Three, I'm District Four, but still, I, I'm here voting in the whole entire Orange County for everything that runs around me. So I have been working very hard, and I have been, um, doing what I said I was going to do, which is listening to my constituents and to the residents. And the other thing was providing more safety, you know, the safety issues and things and concern in our community, I am taking care of that, having town hall meeting with Sheriff Mina. I have been having very good meetings with Captain Susan Wells. I really work very hard, you know, trying to bring that safety into the community and for the community to trust again, or to start trusting law enforcement and the officers, because in one way or another, that's part of what I want to do. Like, we don't lose that trust, because remember, for me, safety is a plus. And I know for the residents as well, for the constituents as well, and we have to always be there. And that's why me as an elected official, if safety is very important for my community, it's important for me as well. And that's why I bring all these, you know, officials, elected officials to help me, you know, bring that information, bring that support to the community. So that's one of the main, that's one of the main things. But if I tell you the list of things that I have done, I mean, it have been, it's not, it doesn't end, Melissa. Even during this pandemic, we started a year ago, a year and one month ago, and I haven't closed my office. You have seen me, because we see each other in all the press conferences, in every single thing that the, you know, the, about the COVID, I am there, because I need to get that information and for the people to see me there, so they will know that I really care and that I, you know, I am there to just provide the information for them as well.
Absolutely. Follow-up question to that, given the fact that you have had such a big open door policy, and of course, on the Orange County Government website, you have several different satellite offices. How do you, how do you manage the traffic? Because obviously, you're speaking with people in person, by phone calls, like how do you normally schedule that out?
Well, you know, in this time, now that we are doing everything through Zoom and WebEx, because we, we cannot, you know, bring people into the office, because it's still closed, it's better, because I can have meetings at the meeting. Sometimes the technology, you know, it freeze and all of that, and we have all these inconvenience, but it's better, because that way I don't have to drive or people doesn't have to come. The weather is not a problem, because we in, indoors, so we can have multiple meetings. And I have to tell you that everybody that asks me for a meeting, I always, you know, schedule them in the first two or three weeks, so they will know that, you know, I'm here for them. I think that's important. And how I manage, well, I come to the office every, almost every day, because sometimes I'm doing tours or meetings out there, but I think almost every day I'm here in the office. I meet with the people, I check all my emails, I answer all my phone calls. So, I mean, and my staff, you know, I have four staff, which they are amazing. I mean, they're very into, you know, they serve like I serve. They represent me in a good way, because they know my heart. So if somebody is in need, it doesn't matter where they live or where they go, if it gets to our office, we will try to help. So they have that hurt as well. So how I manage with the help of them. If they help me, I can do this, because it's a lot of work. It's a lot of emails, it's a lot of phone calls, but still, you know, I don't want to leave nobody hanging. I always want to be there for them.
Well said. When we come back from this particular break, guys, we're going to, you know, keep the conversation going in terms of District Four, just kind of in terms of the future of District Four. So stay tuned. Plus, there is a follow-up question I did want to ask you, Commissioner Gomez-Cordero, in terms of the safety side. So guys, stay tuned, we will be right back.
At Duke Energy, we deliver electricity and so much more, like free home energy assessments, rebates for energy-saving improvements, payment options to help you better manage your budget, and even bill credits for helping the community use less energy. So no matter what you're doing, we can help you make better energy choices every day. It's just another way we bring power to your life. How much can you save?
And we are back with FNM Politics and Power with Orange County Commissioner Maribel Gomez-Cordero. So Commissioner Gomez-Cordero, I did want to follow up real quick. You mentioned, obviously, about the importance of safety, like that is a big priority for you, when you were talking about connecting the community with law enforcement. So I have to get your thoughts on the recent rash of events that's been going on across the country in terms of, like, citizens and law enforcement, particularly people of color and law enforcement? Because at this point, it's not just, the conversation has been predominantly black folks in law enforcement, but as we saw up north, it's people of color in law enforcement. You know, the 13-year-old young man, that was someone who was brown. So like, just what, what has been your, what has been, how's that impacted you recently?
Well, I have to say, and that's a very good question as well, because I know everybody is, you know, looking at that, that right now. And I have to, and it's, it have been a lot of things happening, and if you, if you know, there have been also a lot of things happening and changes in the local sheriff office, and you know that, um, Sheriff Mina has been speaking to the, to the community as well. And it's very important, like, you know, I have been having meetings with him and my staff and other commissioners, which we want to see how that connection, again, that, that safety or that trust of the community back to the law enforcement and the law enforcement, being part of the community. I think that, and I told this to Sheriff Mina, and they understand, and some of the officers, they, they need to be part of the community, they need to win that trust from the community, they need to, to see when the kids go, because remember, when we were raised, I mean, if you see a policeman, you feel safe. Now, they are not feeling safe. No children, they, they scared of them because of all the things that are happening. And also, Melissa, you know, as a professional mental health, you know that there have been also arrests of kids, being arrested, because they have a diagnosis of, you know, diagnosis of ADHD or ADD or bipolar or something, and sometimes they are not treated properly, right? They have been arrested or handcuffed. So, so those are things that I have talked to Sheriff Mina as well, which, you know, we have been requesting, and you can see how in his presentation, two, two weeks ago, or the last time we, well, prior to BCC ago, he had mentioned how they are encouraging, but they are putting mental health groups and services and so into, right, integrated into the, the offices and the Integrated into the, the, the offices and the programs in, in the office, in sheriff office. Because it's important, because all of these things that are happening to us as a na, nationwide, is affecting our emotions, our mental health. So we need to, you know, accommodate to them. So that's good that that's happening to, you know, with the sheriff office help. He's in, incorporate, you know, he put in that thing. I think we need to do more. I think that's, that could be a pilot program that it could be working, it could not, we don't know yet. But I think we're going somewhere and it's addressing the mental health, you know, problem and issues that our community would be, you know, having, uh, or, or facing with all this, you know, a pandemic and all of these things happening in, you know, in our nation, in the world.
Absolutely. And, you know, thank you for touching on the mental health aspect of things. On one of our, our other shows called Let's Clarify, we recent, in a recent episode, we discussed that, like the importance of, you know, implementing, you know, more mental health programs.
Yes.
You know, across the board, like that is something that has to be addressed. And, you know, we had previously mentioned that, you know, the state of Florida is at the bottom with that. So I agree with you, like there, we'll have to do more. So ladies and gentlemen, you guys always know when you hear me and Angel talking, like harass your people, call your elected, your elected officials, hold them accountable. But, um, as we wrap up here, Commissioner Gomez Cordero, thank you for your time. But talk to us about, you know, where you see, um, District Four in a few years. Like once your, once this term is up, what would you like to have seen? What does the future of District Four look like for you?
That's a good question. You know, Melissa, that, um, eh, District Four is very friendly for the people to come to buy a house to live because we have a lot of things. We have, we have in Avalon, you know, Avalon, you can live in Avalon and you don't have to go nowhere from Avalon. Lake Nona, you live in Lake Nona, you don't have to go nowhere because we have everything, hospitals, um, stores, restaurants, doctors, eh, every schools, everything, even universities. So, um, but, and it's very attractive to, to people to come and live moving in District Four. District Four is practically, eh, I mean, the technology is very, you know, up in, in District Four as well. You know, we have this connection or this partnership with Valencia College, with UCF, with, um, with Martin, wha, um, what's, I, I forgot the name. Anyway, so eh, yeah. So we have, um, all, you know, all those things going on. We have accessible everywhere. If you come through the airport, you can go through, um, Seminole, you can go through the back and get through, you know, the, um, eh, I mean, we have access to everything. And I think that, um, our district, I want to continue, you know, taking, taking, um, and working together with the community and the beneficiaries of the, of the resident, like, you know, we have a lot of develop, development going on, um, that we have to really, you know, think and listen to the community, which that's what I do. I do not bring any, any developers or any project to the community unless the community know what's going on. We do community meetings. If we have to do two, three, four times, it doesn't matter. But the community needs to know what's going on and their input is very important to me. So that's what, you know, I'm bringing, and I can see also District Four continue, you know, um, bringing new things like in the technology and studies and everything. I mean, in the medical field, which, you know, is very, um, important as well. So now we have the bright line going through and you know, it will come through my, my district as well. Is the one that would be more affected and touched by the bright line. So it's a lot of, you know, future good thing coming in to District Four and I think to the whole county as well.
Awesome. And where can people be able to get in touch with you? Cause we, we also see that you have an email newsletter as well. So kind of just give folks the, the best way to get ahold of you, to be able to ask you questions or receive updates from your office?
Awesome. Look, you can call my office at 478-365-881. Or you can also email me because let me tell you, I read all the emails. And if I don't read them, I have a staff that read them and they, and we always meeting to discuss every single, um, email that comes in. So if something comes to the, um, junk side, I'm sorry, but we now, you know, checking the junk as well. Yeah. Because I think like there are so many that come during today that some, like, I don't know if that's, you know, directly from the computer that they, they send it to the junk mail. And then we don't get it. So now after we saw that that was happening, now we are checking the junk mails as well. So we are checking every junk, um, every mail, emails. So districtfour@ocfl.net. And every single time you want to call me, you want to email, anything that you think that, you know, is so concerning or, or it could be, you know, in my interest, just bring it in. We will, you know, and if you want an, a, a meeting, call me, email us. So we can also schedule that, um, meetings. I'm, I'm here for you all. I mean, this is a 24/7. I know they said that's a part-time job. Well, I don't take it that way. I think that, you know, having the whole nation in crisis, the local, you know, community in crisis, we all in crisis, I'm there 24/7. And, you know, whatever we can do for you, we are there. You can check in the website of the county. We have all our information as well that you can contact us anytime. No excuse to call me or to email me because I'm everywhere.
And ladies and gentlemen, if you want to contact her, her information is on the screen below, the phone number and the email address. So be sure to use those. And again, for anybody that's wanting to find out more about the rental assistance information, this is the link. Be sure to go to that and check it out. And for anyone who is interested in the small business assistance, be sure to go to ocfl.net for that as well. Or if you want more specifics, contact Commissioner Gomez Cordero for that as well. Thank you so much to the gentleman who commented about that, that's Jose Perez. He was talking about, you know, the significance of small businesses, particularly those who didn't get sufficient funding over the course of pandemic and had to go bankrupt or go out of business. But thanks for your comment, Jose. We appreciate you. But yeah, you or anyone else you know that needs that help, be sure to go to ocfl.net to find out more or email Commissioner Gomez Cordero at districtfour@ocfl.net. But in the meantime, thank you so much, Commissioner Cordero, for your time. We appreciate you. This has been a wonderful conversation and, you know, thank you for all the, the updates as well. We appreciate you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Melissa, for your hard work. You're amazing.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. All right, guys. Now that is the first of many interviews that you will see for F and M Politics and Power. We are officially back. So you'll start to see these interviews every Tuesday at 1:00 PM, whether live or premiere. So be sure to tune in here at Florida National News to find out more. So if you haven't yet, be sure to like, share and subscribe, all that fun stuff. You'll find us at Florida National News, at F and News TV, or at F and News Live on Facebook. You'll find us at Florida National News on YouTube. Be sure to subscribe there and click the little bell icon so you can get all the notifications for all of our shows, not just F and M Politics and Power, but hashtag Let's Clarify with Angel. That of course is Wednesdays at 5:00 PM. So be sure to tune in for that tomorrow. And I'll be, you guys will see me again next Tuesday at 1:00 PM, whether live or through a premiere. But be sure to stay tuned for all of our upcoming interviews where we will continue to do one-on-ones with elected officials and political candidates. Anybody that is doing anything in the world of politics or power and influence, you will see me chatting it up right here with them at Florida National News. In the meantime, continue to stay safe, guys. And if you are someone looking to advertise on our platform, just shoot us an email at ads@flornationalnews.com to find out more. We'd love to have that conversation with you. And if you liked the conversation that I had with Commissioner Gomez Cordero, be sure to leave your comments below, just as Jose Perez did. Thank you so much, Jose, for that. And we'd love to hear from you. In the meantime, continue to stay safe, guys. Much love. Wear your mask still. I know it's uncomfortable, but this COVID-19 pandemic is still here. And until we get it under control, we've still got to stay careful. Right? In the meantime, have a great rest of your afternoon.